All right, so this calls meeting to order, Town Board Meeting for July 9th, 2013. Please stand. Flood Leaks. Flood Leaks to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, folks, there's some agendas up here if you need them. So we're going to start off the meeting with a brief communication or announcement or a reading from Mike Quavis, and then we'll move into the comprehensive plan portion of the meeting.
On June 24th, the town of Princeton appeared at the offices of New York State Division of Human Rights on a complaint filed against the town by Carol McLean. At that meeting, which is called a conciliation conference, the parties entered into an agreement. As part of that agreement, agreed that this statement would be read at the next Town Board Meeting, which is today. Statement goes as follows. The parties acknowledge that during the course of their relationship, there has been acrimony between them, which has affected the ability of the parties to perform their jobs. As a result, the parties agree that they will work to resolve any disputes and will work for the betterment of the town and its residents. That's the statement that was agreed to be read.
I think you should read the whole. Don't you think you should read the whole?
There, I guess, have been inquiries about what the agreement between the town and the complainant was. That is one part of the agreement. The agreement in total is about two pages. You want me to read the two pages?
Yeah, I think it should be read so everybody can hear.
All right. Well, the agreement is titled New York State Division of Human Rights on Complaint of Carol McLean Against Town Princeton. It's got case number and federal charge number. Whereas the complainant has a verified, has filed a verified complaint with the New York State Division of Human Rights, Division alleging that the named respondent has committed unlawful discrimination, and whereas the respondent is subject to the provisions of Article 15 of the executive law of the State of New York, the Human Rights Law, and whereas the named respondent does not admit an act of unlawful discrimination occurred, and whereas the Regional Director of the Division has not made any findings in this matter, and whereas the parties desire to resolve the matter without the necessity of further litigation, and whereas this agreement is subject to the issuance of an order of the Division embodying its terms pursuant to Section 297.3 of the Human Rights Law, now therefore it is agreed between the complainant and the respondent that the respondent shall comply with the Human Rights Law. The party shall cooperate with the Division representatives during the course of any compliance investigation in this matter. The respondent shall not retaliate against the complainant. The complainant shall not retaliate against the respondent. Parties also agree at the respondent's, it says July 11th, should be July 9th, 2013 Town Board Meeting, the town attorney will make the following public statement, which I just read. Next, the parties also agree on all emails concerning town business. Only those individuals who have need to know about this specific topic being discussed will be copied on any email. Next, the parties agree that should the complainant desire to have a budget review concerning the deputy town clerk's work hours for consideration and vote at the July 2013 Board Meeting, she will submit to the respondent Town Board one week prior to the meeting, a written proposal which specifies the number of hours that the deputy clerk should work, and a justification for the number of hours the respondent Town Board will consider same in good faith. Next, the parties also agree to seek guidance from the New York State Department of State, Commission on Open Government, on the respondent's resolution regarding Freedom of Information Law, FOIL procedure, and obtain any guidance concerning any changes and/or implementation of the respondent's resolution, which the parties agree to consider in good faith. Said resolution having already been submitted to the New York State Department of State Committee on Open Government. Next, the parties also agree as applies to records management to seek guidance from the New York State Department of Education, the respondent's policy on records management for review and to obtain guidance concerning any changes and/or implementation of the respondent's policy, which the parties agree to consider in good faith. The respondent agrees to submit same policy for the New York State Department of Education's review within 30 calendar days of the full execution of this agreement. Next, the respondent will employ the services of an individual who will receive, copy, and distribute the respondent's mail in a timely manner. The respondent will continue this mail service on an as-needed basis or for so long as is necessary. Next, the parties agree to treat each other with dignity and respect concerning all dealings and interactions in their official capacities. Next, complainant agrees to accept this agreement in full and complete satisfaction of all claims and clauses of action of any nature against any respondent or its employees, agents, officers, shareholders, successors, or assigns. Furthermore, complainant agrees not to sue or pursue any court or administrative action against respondent or its employees, agents, officers, shareholders, successors, or assigns regarding claims complainant may have had in the past, including and not limited to the subject matter of this complaint. Parties agree that a copy of this agreement and the order may serve as notice of withdrawal of the complainant's charges filed with the U.S. Equal Opportunity Commission, EEOC, federal charge numbers, et cetera. Parties recognize such withdrawal may be subject to approval of EEOC. Complainant agrees to execute any further documents necessary to effectuate this withdrawal. And the document is signed by Carol McLean and Supervisor Joyce on behalf of the town. And then the bottom, as on the basis of the foregone pursuit to the Human Rights Law, Section 297.3, is hereby ordered that the terms of this conciliation agreement, subscribed by the parties herein, be and the same is made part of this order after conciliation. And it's signed by the Regional Director of the State Division of Human Rights.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. So, this point, we're, I'd like to move into the public hearing on the comprehensive plan. So, this piece of the meeting is to receive public comment on the proposed new comprehensive plan for the town of Princeton. A comprehensive plan required by the New York State Town Law, Section 272-A. That law states in part, among the most important powers and duties granted by the legislator to a town government is the authority and responsibility to undertake town comprehensive planning and to regulate land use for the purpose of protecting the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizens. Our comprehensive plan is based on 20, our present comprehensive plan is based on 25-year-old data. While much has remained the same in the town, much has changed in Princeton and the world around us. Requiring that we update our comprehensive plan, it's going to be truly a document that identifies the goals, objectives, principles, guidelines, policies, standards, devices, and instruments for the immediate and long-range protection, enhancement, growth, and development of the town. So before we can start, I'd like to, with the public comment, I do want to acknowledge the contributions of the residents who gave freely of their time and talents to produce the document you have before you. Members of, this includes the members of both 2009 and 2012, actually all three committees, the Princeton Comprehensive Committees that are listed inside the document. Again, our heartfelt thanks to you. I know it was a, it was a very complicated document, it was very complicated, lots of opinions, but with, I think with Paul's guidance, it's a, you know, some cooperating, some, some meetings and compromises were met to make it a document, which is, in my opinion, really truly what it is. It should be a document of the people, a document of the residents, a document of committee. You know, technically it's the boards, but in my personal opinion, it should have always been the residents' and committees' document. But, so I'm sure there are many who hopefully want to speak on the plan, so I'm asking everybody just kind of limit remarks to five minutes so everybody has a chance to speak. Through my responsibility, we fell out of sequence on the progress of how to submit the comprehensive plan. What we should have done is asked Paul and the committee to have a public hearing first as the committee to take response back from the residents. Now, we did have that in the very beginning because I wanted, again, to make sure that this comprehensive plan was all-inclusive and get as much input as we could from the residents. So we had a call or a public hearing in the very beginning, but by process, we should have had one at the end when Paul was, and his committee was completed with the document before they handed it to us and before our Town Board Comprehensive Plan. So, we're out of sequence a little bit. So, I spoke with Mike, and I think what we're going to do here is, we're going to have the public hearing tonight, we're going to open up a public comment, and we're going to leave the public hearing open till July 30th so we can, again, follow up with additional written communications or written comments on the proposed comprehensive plan. In the meantime, we'll ask Paul to set up, you know, through Darla or Mary Sue, a public hearing for the comprehensive plan to come and take comments, and then come back to the board, and then from there we'll submit to the, to the rest of the sequence and seeker. So, I would like to ask, I don't know if Cal has it here, but the town clerk agreed to notice a public hearing and confirm publication in the Gazette newspaper, and also to confirm that all parties have received the proposed comprehensive plan per Resolution 13 dot, and I didn't capture the actual resolution number, but just to confirm that the Princeton Planning Board has received copies of the comprehensive, Princeton Zoning Board Appeals has received copies of the comprehensive plan, the Code Enforcement, Dan Mursiniak, Schenectady County Department of Economic Development and Planning has received a copy, New York State Commissioner of Agriculture, New York State Commissioner of DEC, and New York State Office Recreation and, or Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. So...
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
If everything gets sent to those individuals, yes.
All right. Thanks, Carol. Okay, so with that, I would like to open up the floor to public comment. Again, Paul's the chairman, looks like he's going to make the first comment.
Yeah.
So, open the comment.
Thank you. Okay. Paul Building, 162 Overlook Lane. When we presented this six weeks ago, physically in the form of a film drive, I made some comments, and because it was an agenda meeting, there was no video and only a couple of people from the town attended. So, if you will bear with me, those four of you who were here and a couple of townspeople, I tried to write down what I said then, and I'd like to say it again now. What I said was, I believe that a person should be able to do whatever they want on their own land, within limits. Those limits are our zoning regulations and our town laws. I also strongly believe that those laws should only exist if they do one of two things. They prevent a person from harming the neighbor, or they prevent a person from harming the town as a whole. And the first one is obvious. If I decide I want to harness the wind for free energy and I put a huge silver fan that looks like a turbojet engine on top of a 60-foot pole and four o'clock every afternoon, my neighbor's house starts to flicker like an old-time movie, that's wrong. And it should be prevented by law, and it is addressed in the draft of the comprehensive plan. The second one, though, harming the town as a whole, that might sound somehow like a kind of socialism, but just remember a few years ago, when the town had to deal with its adult usage problem, this was a time when a person who wanted to buy a piece of land right across the street from the town hall and transform its building into a juice bar. It's a, it's a juice bar because it's illegal in New York to serve alcohol in a place where there's public nudity, but it's fine to serve papaya juice. And if anyone thinks that that proposed use wouldn't have been wildly successful, just remember that it would have been within a very short walk of our local truck stop. And we all know how much truckers love papaya juice. And so, we would have had on one of our main entrances to town, on one side, Welcome to Princeton, and on the other side, Live Nudes. And of course, that would have harmed the town as a whole. Its image, its property values, and that problem was resolved with a zoning change that allowed the nudity because the Supreme Court said we had to allow it somewhere, but located a very long walk from those thirsty truckers. But we as a committee all felt that there were a number of provisions in the comp plan that were restrictive of an owner's right to develop their own land without satisfying one of those two justifications. Here's one. An owner should not build their house in the middle of an open field, but put it on the edge of the field instead. Now, I happen to personally feel that's a mistake to build in the middle of that field because you won't be able to play football there later. But I also think that it doesn't harm, if it doesn't harm your neighbor or the town, we don't need a new law or regulation about it, and we remove that from the plan. The same thing goes for building on ridge lines. You'll get a lot better view up there, and be a lot more vulnerable to one of our seemingly more and more frequent wind events. And if you build just below the ridge, you'll still have a view, but be more likely to keep your roof on. That's a good thing for the planning board to suggest to an applicant, but it doesn't need to be a town law. And so on, as we worked our way through Section 13, which is the only section of the comprehensive plan that offers actual recommendations for changes. And as a result, the new, and we dearly hope, final draft is less restrictive than it was. It actually offers a number of recommendations that give owners new options. I'm going to give you three examples we're pointing out here. If you have a home, this is from the new plan, if you have a home on a lot that's zoned for single-family dwelling, we recommend you be allowed to build an accessory apartment, provided that the lot has the additional water and sewage disposal capacity. It would allow additional generations to share their home without lot splitting. It would help older citizens to stay on their land, or grandchildren to live there for that matter. It's part of a new trend that Doug Thorpe told us about called multi-generational families. The second is what the plan refers to as cluster housing or average zoning. And it works this way. And it's not a requirement, it's just an option. If you have 50 acres that are zoned for a five-acre minimum, you can still divide your land into five-acre lots and build 10 houses. But you can also divide your lot differently. Make, for example, 10, nine two-acre lots, as long as they meet water and sewage requirements, and one 32-acre lot. The advantages of that are huge for the town as well as for the builder. It promotes open space, which is good for the town, and it reduces the necessary amount of roads and utility lines, which is good for the building. The third, and final, is a modest suggestion that a person be allowed to build a local gathering place, be it a pub, cafe, sandwich shop, tea room, any place where local residents can gather with food or drink. Because we need, we need places where people can talk to each other, not just here at these sometimes intense meetings. Such places are built in residential zones would have to conform to the look and nature of the neighborhood, your street signage, mask parking areas, and make no noise audible to its nearest neighbors. At any rate, I have said my piece, and it's time for somebody else to say something.
Any comments on the comprehensive plan?
My name is Tim Bishop. I live at 318 Bern Drive, and my wife can't be here tonight. And she and I crafted a few comments on the comprehensive plan. She was much more instrumental in its design and crafting than I was, but nonetheless, we came together on this document. And if you know both of us, you'll know what a historic moment that is, us agreeing on most anything. So this is divided really into like an English paper, a little bit of style and content. So additionally, or initially, what we're looking at with the comprehensive plan is to polish it up a little bit and make it a little bit more professional in its formatting and appearance and its referential state. And Pat goes through with a fine-toothed comb, and she mentions a number of areas, and I won't read them all, but I would like to read, get this in the record so that we can go through the doc perhaps, and, you know, remove things like three-figure eights and, you know, figures and maps that don't really work where they are or how they're presented. So just, just a little bit of, you know, content and formatting to polish it up and make it a little bit more professional. The second area, we went through it section by section, Section 2, the historical section. This is really Pat's, so she's, there's an extensive discussion and historical background of Princeton. Yet, there are no goals or action items in the document for identifying and conserving historical resources. On page 4, there's a mention of an historical resources inventory, and what is the significance to the plan of including this since all recommendations for preserving historic resources have been removed? And this is sprinkled out across a few sections, actually, the historical registry and, I had been on the Historical Preservation Committee where I lived in Saratoga, so I know how instrumental it is in shaping a town and the character of a town. You can get federal funding, you can get local funding. Yes, there are certain restrictions. You can't take a nice brick historical siding and replace it with tin or plastic or something like that. So it's a balance, again, and the intent of history really is to preserve it so you don't want to change its character too much. But the availability of managing historical resources and getting additional funding for their upkeep, I think, is huge, and I would like to see the plan actually support that a little bit better with some of its content and management of those resources. So number three, Section 3, this is kind of an update section, and again, another reoccurring theme is that the plan took a long time to develop, so some of the early data is no longer accurate. So Assembly District 105 is now 111, you know. New York Senate District, the 46th District is now the 44th. So there's things like that. It needs to be updated and refreshed as, as the calendar moves and state data changes. So we want to get that in there. Section 404 discusses flood planes, and this is another update issue. The data in this section is greater than five years old. The references should now be made to include DEC's plans to adopt new flood plane maps. So instead of using the old data, we want to get the new stuff in there, and that's the recommendation. Section 5, Existing Land Use, page 11, number of acres in the county ag districts should be updated from, again, another update issue, get the recent data instead of having the 2008 numbers, the tables in Section 506 should match some tables in 3A and, you know, yada, yada, those kind of things. So we want to get all the new, new data in there wherever we can, and we've listed some of those areas. Section 6, Land Use Regulation, page 18, mentions planned residential development district. That section should read, there are four water supply protection overlay districts and provisions, and provisions for establishing one or more planned residential development districts. There are currently no planned residential development districts, and that's an error in the document. Section 7, Population, any tables, ah, this is a census issue, there are a lot of 2000, 2000 census data in there, and they should be updated to 2010 census data. And there's also a reference, I guess, at the bottom of Table 10, I didn't actually notice this one. There's a note about some data from ACS, and I'm not sure that that reference is, is proper at this point, so I want to correct some of those, some of those, you know, little data refresh issues again. Section 8 Housing. Again, didn't appear to be updated. There's a reference to an urban area that looks like it's inaccurate relative to the urban areas published for Princeton. Table 12 needs 2010 census data again. Median family, or value of a single-family owner, I have a red house in the county, is now at $165,000, and we still have it listed at $94,500. So that's about an 80% difference, so that should probably be reflected. And we should get 2012 data for building permits and things like that. Section 9, Community Facilities. Example of determining equalization rates on page 35, oh, that's supposed to be an appendix item, and it doesn't really fit in the community. Again, another list of historic resources that was in the previous draft has been eliminated, and I think it would strengthen our emphasis. And this is really from the many surveys that were taken and functions where citizens from Princeton gathered and gave their input. They said that the rural character and the historic nature of the town was very important to people, so I think we should really put back some kind of an itemized inventory whereby we can manage those historical resources. And that used to be in there, and we're recommending putting it back in. Trends and Issues, Section 11. A little bit of consistency there. Shouldn't have an, yeah, that's, that's a minor thing, that's a formatting thing, it's not worth mentioning really, but you can polish up the document later. Oh, there's an item 28, yeah, something about monitoring and a testing proposal that just kind of doesn't make a lot of sense. And item 30 makes a reference to railroad siding, and we should probably get a little bit more granularity or definition of a siding so that we don't allow for, you know, a two-mile spur or something like that. Section 12, Visions and Goals. Again, there used to be goals for historic resources, they've been omitted. And 13, Section 13 is the big one, recommendations and action items, and it's typically the most important section. So Pat's a little concerned seeing that certain language is removed that would provide addition that... a dish that no longer provides protection for the town's resources, including the public water supply, its rural character, and some of the scenic view issues that, that we're looking at. Section 1301, item two, evaluating visual impacts is not limited to just major commercial projects. Instead of applying some oversight into both types of major projects, both commercial and housing. So a major housing project, not a single-family home, is proposing to, to keep the visual impact evaluation in there for that. Let's see, density, don't need to go into that. Oh, in a large project, there's provisions to handle open space. So Paul talked earlier about taking a 50-acre parcel and zoning five acres and putting, you know, 10 parcels closer together, then you have open space. So who owns the open space and who manages it? Well, a town really doesn't want to be owning open space, and it's kind of been well-known provision for a long time, so you typically assign it to someone, either the larger lots in the development or the developer or something. So that's just a minor mission and should probably be put in there so that the town doesn't get stuck with managing open space in some of these projects. Section 1302, item one, recommendation for the town board to take action to collect information to support a change of the water overlay districts to base districts, and to get data to enforce current restrictions is not consistent with strengthening oversight like the water supply. Right now, there are some holes in our protection over water supply zones, it's not being well-protected, and changing these particular districts in 1302 to base districts, which we are proposing, or Pat and I are proposing, would provide more protection to this essential resource. So in that specific area, there are 200-plus households in town that depend on the clear water from these town wells. And we think it should take some pretty reasonable efforts to protect that resource. It's a, who was it, Halley Salassi, I'm not good at too many quotes, but one of the heads of the U N, I think it was Halley Salassi. Said the difference between third-world countries and top-world, number-one industrialized nations is the amount and quality of the fresh water that they have available for their citizens. And I know I took that quote way out of context, but you get the point. It's an important resource, and we should spend time managing it. So we're proposing changing some of those water overlay districts to base districts to provide the additional oversight and to continue the quality of water that these 200-plus homes have known so far. Recommendations to ensure... Oh, there's some special interest issues that Pat raises. There's something about recommendations to ensure that the current allowed housing density in the GR1 district would not adversely impact the water supply, which is a good thing. Appear to have been removed. She goes into her thoughts as to why it was removed, but nonetheless, it should be put back in so that oversight on available water for GR1 district development is continued. And town really needs to balance, to your point, Paul, I think you need to balance, you know, the needs of the many with the needs of maybe one, you know, person that owns a lot of GR1 district land, probably doesn't want any oversight. But we should probably make sure that there's adequate water supply for those houses when they get developed in that kind of a district. So section 1305, another minor tweak. There was a concept of a town center that floated around during the development of the plan when, when Joe Zininski was managing it or chairing it. And I happened to go to a couple of those sessions where it was talked about, people didn't really know how to do it here. So the concept was somewhat poorly defined and replaced with hamlet zones. Hamlet zones do have a little bit more definition in our known, at least in New York, maybe throughout New England. So we're proposing putting hamlet zones back in rather than a central town, town center. 1306, and I'm almost done here, sorry, probably over my five minutes. An item, I'm considering the addition of the, oh, here's the accessory apartment. Well, the single-family residence was originally accompanied by a qualifying sentence that added, add clear development standards so that when we have accessory apartments, we can do some of the things that Paul actually proposed, you know, make sure there's adequate water and sewer, sewage, and, and issues like that. And essentially required that an accessory apartment be subject to site plan review and, and special permits so that those things, those health and safety issues can be better regulated throughout the town. I did hear and understand Duck Thorpe and Paul Golding's concerns about that. I, I understand our changing demographic and multi-dimensional use certainly don't want to limit the availability of accessory apartments. We just want to make sure that the health and safety issues are covered and, you know, they're going to be beneficial not only to the individual owner, but the community as a whole, not pose a problem. Section 1310, business development, oh, here's a good one. We had Mr. Paul and some other folks come in and challenge our zoning, our commercial zoning. And the commercial zoning, even when it went in way back in, what was it, 89, the old plan, was a little bit remiss. And there were a number of discussions during the development of this comprehensive plan to review and revise commercial zoning to allow more things like what Mr. Paul was trying to do with his property, his property, and bring it under special use. So these recommendations are essential for rezoning areas, upper Penguin Road to C2, and adjusting allowed and special uses to better fit the current uses that people are trying to, you know, to the point of, I want to do certain things with my property to generate income that's, that's not destructive to the community. Want to revisit those commercial zones to allow people to do that. So I think that the comprehensive plan could perhaps do a little better job and put some languages in there to support that kind of activity. So section 14, prioritize actions, do not emphasize protect, this is the next section, not the recommendation section. Don't emphasize protection of the rural character of the town, which was the number-one priority of residents who provided input to the process through the survey and, and the town meeting. So we'd like to see some of the proofing items of the document changed so that it's a little more well-crafted and professionally finished. And our recommendations would be maybe just send it back to the committee to fix, you know, some of those document formattings, strengthen recommendations to protect the town water, which is important. Update the census and commu, update the data, you know, provide the fresh data. And restore some of the historical resources list and management practices, and then revisit those commercial zones. So that's really, I mean, it looks like it's a great effort, it's there, needs another tweak or two, you know, to be a foundational document for moving forward. That's it. Thanks for providing this opportunity.
Additional comments at this time?
Sorry. Just told Tim he took a lot of my stuff. I'm going to talk to your, Mary Sue Reed, 962 Dararo. I have two questions initially, and Paul, maybe you can help. Table three on page 12, the property classes vacant land, recreation and entertainment, and public service figures do not match those in the following subclass charts where you have the actual breakdown. And also, there is no chart for the wild forested conservation lands and parklands. And can you explain why the wild forested conservation lands and parklands dropped from 28 acres in 2008 to only one acre in 2011? And then my other question is, table 14 on page 31, I'd just like to know what year that the traffic counts were taken on those.
What table is that? Sorry.
Table 14 on page 31, just the year of the traffic counts. It just says recent.
If I may, on the one acre, years ago, the assessor changed the way land was classified in our town. A lot of the acreage was put in as primitive forest. Now it's classified as homestead, non-homestead. So a lot of the areas that were once, you know, just open forest are now classified as non-homestead. And that's probably one of the, without it in front of me, but that's probably one of the reasons why it dropped to one acre.
Oh, it just says recent traffic, so I don't know what year that is. Table three is on, also, yeah. This, this does not match on some reason, don't match the numbers on the subclasses.
Yeah, which had remained. I started working on that in 13.
Yeah, okay, so that, so that needs to be looked at too, because they don't, they don't match with the path provided, all of those terms earlier on.
Yeah. So I actually asked her after, after she had given ideas she would do one, pick up the slide, we're just having some difficulties in formatting.
It's just that the numbers don't match.
I understand.
Okay, okay. I'm going on with my comments, and I agree with a lot of what Tim and Pat came up with, so I can skip some of mine, or I'll just go over it very quickly. I agree with the citizen survey results that maintaining the rural character of Princeton is an important objective. This includes town-sponsored conservation actions resulting in the permanent protection of open space, scenic views, active farmland, historic structures, and critical environmental areas. As is stated in the report, these objectives can be accomplished by enhanced site plan standards and subdivision regulations, landowner incentives to protect open space in agricultural lands, careful sighting of utilities, requiring buffers between new homes and existing farms, and adjusting lot sizes in Princeton zoning districts. The committee has also stated of paramount importance is the production, protection of the municipal water supply and the aquifer recharging areas. In section 1202, goals, I noticed that the committee removed historic resources, and this runs contrary to the citizen survey results, showing a desire to preserve historic structures. So I think I would, I would like to see this added back to the draft. Section 13, strategies and recommended actions area is missing some crucial proposals and effective actions. This is comparing it with the 2009 draft plan, and I would like to see some changes. Where it says consider, you might want to see require, especially on A2A where it's the use of the D E C visual environmental assessment form and use it as a model. I mean, these tools are available to the towns, and, you know, we should take the advantage of having our boards use these tools. On A3, the developmental standard should be used in all new developments, not just major housing and commercial projects. You can make these recommended actions stronger by removing the word encourage. And I would like to see language added back regarding ridgeline protection by avoiding building on ridge lines. And in order to promote new development that is consistent with the goals to comprehensive plan, the site plan review process needs to be enhanced with more specific development standards relating to character and the environment. And consider dividing buildable areas in the zoning law by establishing minimal building, buildable area requirements. And I would like to see included in A5, review and revise the town's existing subdivision ratings to ensure that natural, cultural, and historic resources are preserved during minor and major subdivision activity. And 13.02, the environmental protection, I would like to see section A provide more protection of the town's water supply. These areas should be limited to very low-density residential uses and no commercial use. As the 2009 draft points out, without sewers, the density of a GR1 district may be too high to protect water quality in this area. And it's recommended that the town board should arrange for a hydro geological analysis that would determine the acceptable density of development in the GR1 district. On A7A, I would like to see it require submittal of concept plans for both traditional and conservation subdivisions for all major subdivisions. This will actually get developers away from your typical cookie cutter developments and allow a great deal of creativity to go into the planning of the development. And because we value the natural resources in this town, I would like to see enhanced protection of stream banks and stream site vegetation on all development, minor and major, and avoiding disturbances, disturbances on slopes greater than 15%. Again, I don't want to keep repeating what Tim has said, too. In 1303, the agricultural section, again, I think it's really important, especially if we have, we're having new development in town, you should require buffers between non-farm development and active farms. I mean, one of the biggest complaints about residents is when they move in, they go, I didn't know there was a farm next door, the flies, the smells, you know, the farm tractors, you know, three or four in the mornings. I don't want to see us lose any more farms. I think also the town should adopt a local right to farm law, and I know the state has one, but I think the local one would add a little bit more, more teeth to it. And again, as Tim pointed out, in 1304, historic is missing. History's a big part of Princeton. I mean, we, we provide, we have a, we have a town historian who has an office here and does a lot of work in our town. And preservation of historic features, I believe, was really important in the survey results. So I would like to see a lot of the historic stuff added back to this new draft. In 1306, in the housing, I'm in favor of senior housing. I'm, I'm heading there really shortly. But I don't think it's a good idea to include senior housing in all zoning districts, and I believe that's how it's labeled in the draft. Now, some areas are just not compatible with this. So I would like to see senior housing placed in, you know, GR1, GR2, and GR3 districts, but all, I'm not sure if that's going to work. And also, in A2, the accessory apartment language needs to be strengthened. As Tim pointed out, any accessory apartments should be subject to site plan review and allowed only through special use permits. And again, and that's, that's for the health and the benefit, to see if there's a carrying capacity on a lot for septic, there's a lot of features to this. Section 1310, the business development, I think it's great, this, this encouraging of the small gathering places, but again, it's, it's listed in the draft as being in all zones, and you should really limit these businesses to where they would be compatible with the area. And the one last thing I have is in section 1311 under government and number nine, I would like to see, and we could do this now, is include all the legal notices right on the town's website, because again, there's a lot of people in town that don't get the newspaper, but they do look at the website, and that would be great to communicate that to people in town. to people in town. And I thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Mary Sue.
Okay.
Yeah, just one. The removal of the historic section took place at a town board meeting when the committee was all present, and it was as a suggestion of Lou Esposito, and I would love. Lou would present the same argument now for the removal of that that he did then, which frustrated us. I'd like to hear this one, if you want it.
Well, just to be clear here, and, you know, Lou wants to speak up, it's fine, but this is for public comment for the board to listen to. It's, you know, again, if Lou wants to make a statement, you know, after we've closed the public hearing, or the open floor, or during council concerns, that's fine. Again, if Lou wants to respond out, again, that's fine, but I just want to, I do want to control the back and forth here. All right, so.
Tim White. Can I just say something quick? With all the suggestions that everybody has, and I'm not saying that they're not well-thought-out or meaningful.
Lisa Karandi.
Oh, Lisa Karandi, do I need to go? I was part of the comp committee. We worked very hard, we worked very well together, trying to keep everybody, everybody in town in mind. So it was to the benefit of all of our residents, not one, not two, not a personal opinion. Nobody had one certain agenda. There was, it was very well thought out, and Paul did a great job finishing out our committee with all of the issues that our committee had. I think in this process, if we follow all of the suggestions, and I'm not saying that it doesn't need to be tweaked or, you know, reworded here or there, but if we go on all of those suggestions, we're going to go right back to the original document that we were working on back in September with all of the suggestions, whether it be through what people have discussed tonight. That was the whole point of our process, was to make that document better. And I think we reached that goal for everybody's benefit. And I don't want to see all of those changes or suggestions put back in because now we're back to square one, and this thing will never get passed. So that's just my opinion.
Any final comments for this session?
Mary Jane Lessing, if you'd charge, wrote, "On the historical issue, I am sure that many people don't realize that when they put their property into a historical situation, they are restricted on to do many things with their own property. That is one of the reasons why I don't recommend putting something in on individual properties who might be hysterical." Because I know firsthand, when you get a grant or anything to do something to keep it historical, you're so restricted that if you want to add on to a building or whatever, you cannot do that, even though that you're going to put it into that period or whatever. So just to let people know that it is very restrictive, and I don't recommend a lot of it put in.
Norm Miller, St. Lane Drive. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, the original committee had gone through this. It's a tremendous amount of work, and Paul, I congratulate you and thank you for all the work that you had done. And perhaps what would be good is to have the comments that Tim and Pat made and Mary Sue made put in writing to give to the committee, because any document, any process becomes much better when you have more input to look at it. Sometimes people outside the box think different than people inside the box. That doesn't mean it has to be changed, but it would help to generate further thought to relook at things. So that would be my suggestion, that they look at these, and they can decide if it should or should not be adjusted.
But that's why we took it out.
I know.
So my name is Doug Thor. I live on Reynolds Road. I was on the comprehensive merging committee, and I was appointed to this particular committee. One thing we reviewed right along is keeping in mind, a lot of the things that were in the original document, we all want, from ridgeline protections to placement oversight of this historic research, they all take resources to implement within the town. We don't have a lot of resources in this town. And it's a balancing act. We address the public safety, the environmental protections. We went through it with a fine-tooth comb, giving everyone in all parts of the town adequate protections, albeit from housing to environment to parks. Keeping in mind that we don't have the resources to implement a lot of the things that might be in there, just don't have it. It's just going to cost money in this town, and we don't have the money to implement it. We, there are extreme protections that we have reviewed. We have enough laws in this town to be zoning review. The zoning law itself covers a lot. It does need some updating. This document is just, is one step. The next step is going to be a zoning review committee is going to take these comments, they're going to review them, and it's their guide to change what needs to be changed. So, you know, we, two times a week since December, November, we've been at it, and I think we've done a good job. I've reviewed a lot of stuff in this town. I got to know a lot of people in this town, and, you know, housing and restrictions on development and their standards, we've reviewed a lot. And so, you know, I think that plan is a solid plan. It was a well-mixed group of people that we reviewed it. We all had our own ideas, and it all came through quite well. So I think the plan in place is pretty solid, so.
So at this time, I'm going to recess this session. Carol, in the, I want to make a change in the, instead of July 30th, I'd like to recess this, recess this session until the next.
Rescess the public hearing.
Rescess the public hearing. To the next town board meeting, August 13th, instead of July 30th. Thank you.
Tim, is we going to keep it open, so for comments on the next town board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. And any written comments? If they aren't forwarded to me, I'll either written or email, and I'll get them to Paul, and he's been forward to his committee as required. Again, Paul, I need to make sure following the, you know, again, my responsibility here, we fill out the sequence, so the logical progression. So I need to set up a public hearing for your committee to sit and take additional comments. Might be nothing, it might, so I'll work with you and set a date and get a notice in the paper. Okay, so recessed this at 8:00.
I have a question. How are we going to set the timing for the public hearing at the comprehensive plan? Are we going to set that, we're going to have a meeting to set the public hearing? Or are we going to set the public hearing tonight? Or is it how long? Because if we meet, it's going to be another month before we have the public hearing, so it can start to start dragging out. You know, I'm trying to, do we do them together, or do we wait?
It's a committee process, so the committee should be the one to set that date.
Okay. That's going to be, I would say, a two to four week process, minimum.
Well, I'm hoping Paul's sending out an email and kind of responds to, hey, how's the next, you know, seven days or 10 days from today? You know, we're five weeks out from the next town board meeting, so it's a pretty good gap here.
Well, if they could somehow manage to have a five-minute meeting to just set.
Does this require, once we set a date, does it require that, I mean, what's the spacing between saying the date?
You have to have at least 10 days notice. You have to have at least 10 days notice.
Got that, sir.
Mike, do they have to respond to this, these comments, or they can just go with the?
They, you know, they can do with the comments whatever they want. They don't have to officially respond point by point to every comment.
So then they can just present it as it is?
Well, they're going to hold a public hearing, and they should take into consideration whatever the people at that public hearing say.
Or this one.
And if you find that the document should be amended, then they can amend the document and present the amended document to the town.
And if not, we all agree not, that it's going to go as it is?
And say that there aren't any changes, and then we can take it up again.
Ideally, that would be good, within the five-week period between now and the next town board, to get it done.
Absolutely. All right, so Paul, I'll work with you. I have to turn it off.
I went and turned it down. I turned it up. Everybody was shivering out there, so.
You're like Superman.
Lady over here, sitting over here, she's going like this. So I turned it on.
All right. Well, then I suggest we just keep going for okay here. So at this point, I'd really open it up for privileges of the floor as part of the normal town board meeting, so read some comments here. At every regularly scheduled town board meeting, the public shall have the right to address the town board during a portion of the meeting referred to as privileges of the floor, which will take place after reports to the town department supervisor. Members of the public wishing to speak during a privilege of the floor may sign a sheet before the commencement of the town board meeting indicating his or her name, address of proposed topic. Signing the sheet will dictate the order in which persons are recognized to speak and will assure the town clerk has correct spelling of names and addresses for the minutes. Members of the public are to restrict their comments to items of town business in order to observe proper decorum while addressing the town board. Persons who become unruly, using inappropriate language, or persist in speaking on items not related to town business may be ruled out of order. Again, although there is no official time constraint, speakers may address one or more items in their comments. They should be considerate of others and try to limit their remarks to no more than five minutes, so that all interested members of the public have the opportunity to be heard. So at this point, I'll open it up for privileges of the floor. All right, there's no comments at this time. We'll close the privileges at, open it up at 8:07, close it at 8:08. All right, we'll get to old business. So I think Nick took off, so I can touch on Highway. I know, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether you were opening it for that or not.
That's actually the time, so, actually.
We'll have a time at the end, right? There's another public comment at the end?
There's another public comment at the end, but I'll give you, you know, what I have so far, and then you can address it later on. So for Highway, so as everybody knows, we've had, obviously, some major storms here in the town. We've had some, you know, some considerable damage done to a lot of the town roads. I think the first storm was four inches and 40 minutes, which equates to a 200-year storm. So we've had some major rain damage, not as bad as some of the other communities around us, in particular, west of us. But anyway, so we've had some damage. I sent a letter to Joe Ryan, the county's, and I work with Nick. We drove around last week examining some of the roads and some of the projects. Joe was on vacation last week. I spoke to Joe for about an hour this afternoon. We're going to try to schedule some time, hopefully Monday of next week, to go around to various areas that need some addressing. Quackenbush being one of them, a couple spots on Quackenbush, at the bottom, Ruder Drive, Overlook Lanes, got two projects, right at the base, and then there's a culvert question at the, on the backside of Overlook. And then Jim's question about Booter, the Willow Run section up there. We talked in, you know, going back to Quackenbush, so there's a bunch of items there. We're going to run some ideas past them. I think we have a, the primary issue is a runoff from the farm there. Get some heavy rains, it washes across the road, fills with the culverts. It's going to be an ongoing problem, and I'm sure the town, the county's going to get, I think their pocketbook's going to get empty. So we need to work with code enforcement, you know, the local farmer there and the community there to try to address the actual root cause of the problem there. Ruder Drive is, we just need to, I think, extend the culvert on the south side of Ruder Drive at the corner of Pangburn up, so the bottom of the road right there is just some wear and tear and freeze and thaw, is getting broken up, and the road's pretty new, it's only a couple of years old. Overlook Road, we lost part of the road, is it, you know, that was closest to the culvert on Kelly Station? And then as far as the Willow Run, that's pretty much the length of the whole road. So I want to make sure that when we come out, you know, we try to work with you and your community there to an agreed solution. So there's a couple pieces. We can rip the stone up, seed it, or put topsoil down, try to seed it, if that's what everybody wants. We'll look at some prices on that, maybe just in trouble spots, you know, on those curves. So, you know, we just want to make sure and communicate to you guys that if I can get the arrangements, it'd probably be during the day, you know, to come out and meet with your group up there, same with the Quackenbush residents, you know, and say, hey, this is what we propose, here's some ideas, you know, make sure we try to get your buy-in on what we're going to do. All right? So I'm hoping, again, to set it for Monday or Tuesday with him. As soon as I get some notice, I'll give you guys a call, and if you can meet, it's great. You know, we'll try to present a couple options. Not only for your Willow Run, but also for, for the Quackenbush people, residents. So, and then I think there's some other minor projects around the area that we had forwarded to Joe. So as soon as I get, we'll put together a 284 review with you, you know, so it's going to take some, you know, some work with Joe, Nick, you know, and us, and then the residents, especially in those two spots, so. That's, I think that's about it for highway. Any questions for myself or Nick?
Yes, regarding the highway, we did have a resident on Giffers Church Road was requesting, again, for speed limit reduces. And I tried to explain to them, you know, about all the reports and so forth, so. I don't know if that's something we can follow up, or we'll have to follow up with now.
Well, we actually, now that, I was reminded.
Now, now those?
There's also a requirement on Dow Road for speed limit.
Yeah, Darrell and Parker's Corner. Parker's Corner, Darrell, and Giffers Church. The thing with Giffers Church is they've got three different speed limits. It starts at 55 at the top, then it goes to 45, and then on Rotterdam's end, it's 35, so. I'm always concerned about keeping it consistent.
All right. All right, I'll try to work with. I think Mary Sue, you had a couple of people we can reach out to, so I'll try to get in touch with you and try and draft up a couple of letters. All right, anything else for highway? The doctor, Dr. Me.
General.
General Me. General Me, Civil War.
Oh, we had a few more valves let go there in the Normans Hill Creek and one another creek bed there a month ago. What else can we do? Replaced the fire pump drive on Darrell Road last night, or Sunday night really. Booster pumps on Ruder Drive, the piping finally corroded through, or wore through. And started leaking, so Mark Crimby and I spent most of yesterday and half of today rebuilding the inside of Ruder Drive Station. We've got all the water meters, everybody should have their water bills by tomorrow. If somebody hasn't gotten them, you should call the office and make sure.
How's the roof on top of Ruder Drive?
Oh, that, I've got a new vent coming. They haven't called me back yet, they had to order all that. Wear and tear over the years of all the wind up there all on.
So who's going to climb up there and do that?
statewide acta store. I've been up there about eight, 10 times myself.
You used to be 21 too?
I wasn't 21 when I did it, I only did it a couple of years ago while I was up there, since then I had a firearm injury, so I hadn't climbed it and stuff. Probably up there sometime this summer.
All right. And what's all that stuff all over Route 7 there? All over property?
All over the property, solar panels?
No way. Finally.
Well, I don't know how long, Lou says another two or three weeks, he was talking to somebody.
Hey, bud. I'm only kidding.
You know, they put two pieces up and they took them back, they put two pieces up Thursday afternoon and they had to hook them back down Friday morning and they have them back. Now they're working out here. It always seemed like they shorted a couple of bolts, shorted a couple of pieces. The weather's just screwing them up totally, because when they epoxy those things in, they can't have rain hit the epoxy.
No, we're still, we're getting there.
Getting there.
We're getting there. It's better.
You know, I gotta make, you know, once they get everything, the last two panels on Route, on Route 7, then, you know, the wiring is all, that thing's already ready to go. All they got to do, the electricians got to come back and just wire those panels up and fire that thing up.
We're waiting breathless anticipation.
And our well levels are running about six feet, seven feet higher right now this year than they were last year at this time.
I wonder why.
Yeah, because of three feet of water in the Normans Hill right now.
Anything for General Me?
How's it come?
Whoa.
It works.
Yeah.
I think it's starting to start using it a little bit more today. And I didn't tell them how many hydrants, valves, and everything else I've been doing over the eight, last eight weeks.
That's great.
He gave me the cast back two weeks ago and said, here, if you're going to do anything, put the cast on, and still don't do anything. And I said, okay.
Thanks, George. Is, George, let me jump down, is Dan still here, you think?
He wants to. He wants.
Don't see us dropping.
Okay. So I follow some conversations, and Mike and Ethan are with you, I've got a little bit too. Michelle, anything from Justice?
No.
Darla, the best dog control officer inside of Hudson River.
Glad to get you know her.
I guess so.
Well, the enumeration is now well underway. I received approximately 300 responses, which I appreciate everyone taking the time to do that. I've gone through the initial pack of responses, I have probably another 100 to go through now. Surprisingly enough, and Carol correctly found out, but between the end of April and the end of June, our number of licenses went up about 278. At the end of?
Up 278, now up 278.
No, it increased 88% by a number of 278, up to a total of 592 from 314 at the end of April. Which is, on average, if you take a $10 a dog, that's almost $3,000 in the clerk's office just in the last two months. And so, and all of those dogs are now vaccinated and licensed, and it's wonderful. And we're still not finished yet, I'm very excited. And Carol, I'm finding it very, very busy licensing dogs in the last month. And, you know, for those who haven't had an opportunity to return the letter, and I know there are a few among us, really, it's not too late. And if at some point you don't get the letter back to me, expect to visit, because I'll be there. But that, only one last thing, that we went back and forth several times on, like, quite as you know, there were some questions about foster dogs and whether or not they needed to be licensed. And there are way too, there's way too much criteria to evaluate. So anytime anyone has a foster dog and you're not sure whether it should be licensed or not, it, we're going to have to take a look at them independently of each other. This most recent one, it was determined that it, it was exempt from licensing, but not exempt from rabies, rabies vaccination. So that was interesting, how we, as long as it took to figure that out. But that's it for enumeration for now. As far as dog control goes, as you know, I, all the enumeration letters went out and of course I used up all my prepaid postage envelopes, so I needed to order some more. So Carol has that for next month, so that's not a problem. There was an old topic brought forward most recently about a VAS upgrade for the computer that I use and I share with the planning board chair, that it could have the VAS software, the clerk, clerk licensing system added to it to give me access to the reports that Carol and Rodney run for dog control, for inquiry, searches, any, most recent. Because I typically get a report from the clerk's office once a month and it'll be very helpful for me to have it available to me more frequently than that, especially now. But I, I don't have enough information, I don't think, without talking with probably Carol and yourself and probably the, the sales rep from VAS Systems before we really make a decision to do that. Just a reminder to homeowners, Princeton Local Law, number 6A, there is a leash law here. Please don't let your dogs run at large. Not only is it just a violation of the local law, but worse things can happen, like your dog can get hit by a car. It can be stolen, it can meet with wildlife and not recover. So please, if you really, really love your dog, please just follow the leash law. And in addition to that was the most recent provision, which was Local Law 6B, which talked about barking. And all I can say to my father, who tells me when he watches this on TV, you say the same thing every month. All I'm saying is, be respectful of your neighbors, your neighbors can hear your dogs barking. And please don't be the test case for the new local law language. So I'll just leave it at that and I won't say it anymore for a while.
Well said.
And all those dogs are not required to be on leashes on your own property. Generally, dogs don't know where the boundaries are, so unless they're supervised, they're going to run. And just, you know, like I said, if you really love your dog, just keep them supervised, be very careful. An update also, the next free rabies clinic for Schenectady County residents will be August 17th at the Glendale Senior Center, 32 Warden Road in Glendale. Cats and ferrets must be in cages and they can be taken between 10 and 11. Dogs from 11 to 12, they must either be in cages or on leashes. Bring your current rabies certificate if you have it. If you have a rabies certificate, your dog will be given, or your cat will be given a three year rabies instead of a one year. If the veterinary site can't verify that this dog is up to date with rabies, you will only get a one year. And just as a reminder also, the clinic is free to county residents, although donations aren't always welcome, I appreciate it. If you have any questions about dog control, dog law, dog licensing, clinics, whatever, visit the dog control page on the website and give me a call, email me, whatever. I'm fairly responsive and do my best.
That's why you're the best. Good?
I think so.
Anything for Darla, guys? Next one, Carol.
Way too quiet.
Town planner is Gino, Gino is obviously not here today. The hazard mitigation grant program, looks like it's extended, Mike, to the White Forest?
Yep.
Try to get a veteran and try to work with Nick and see if we can pick out a road. Carol, town clerk?
Um, no, I don't.
Town council, Mr. Bob Myers.
I think we've pretty well covered our highway issues, so nothing really new.
Agreed. Anything for Bob, thanks? Okay. Mr. Lou?
We've got on here the fire alarms. We had a problem with the smoke detectors, again, the fire alarm system, which goes no place. But Joe had, was working on that with Wolf.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm sure he'll address this in a few minutes, so that's that. Trooper barracks, we can go into a long list of things that are problems with the state police barracks. There's a problem with the state police roof. The flat roof is going to need, need to be replaced. I don't know when it was replaced last. There was a patchwork done. I've had two roofers up, given, they, one's already given me an estimate and the others are in the process of it. The shingled portion of the roof is going to have to be replaced. I guess it was damaged during the hail storm a few years back, probably two or three years ago. And we never noticed it, so, and the roof is 20 years old. That's going to have to be replaced. I'm told by our attorney that everything has to be prevailing wages, which is going to be a very costly project. The garage is still, has water in it, we're going to have to address that problem. Do something with the drain so that there's no water going in. Probably when we address the, the gutters that are leaking and have frozen and leaked, they've never been cleaned. So that should alleviate the problem, but we are going to have to have something done with the drain in the garage. They still have about an inch and a half of water that lays in the garage continuously. It still has never drained out, even though we're, even if it hasn't rained for five days, so we have, we have a problem. And like George, like Dad, George has been there with me and it's an ongoing problem. We do have, I asked Dad to give us an estimate on repairing the gutters. I think I've given them to you. I think you've got a copy and everybody's got a copy of the, to replace the, to, do the damaged gutters. There's two downspouts that are broke, which is causing a problem. And to replace the dirt around the backside of the garage along the retaining wall. I think that that probably should be done immediately. I think the estimate here was $150 that, that.
Dabs.
Dabs gave, I don't know if that's a total over here, if he gave.
$150 plus 90.
Plus 90, yeah, so it's 240. So I think that we should be doing this immediately. They've had this problem, now it's been ongoing since winter to the garage. I, I think we should address it. The, they had a problem with the leak up in the, apparently the drains in the roof for the air conditioning, condensers up there, the pipe came dislodged. I was quite surprised to learn after I spoke to George about it. It's just none of the, the drains up in the state police for the units up there are glued together. One of them came dislodged and we had water leaking down into the bathroom on the other end of the building. And on the other end again. I don't know why they were never glued together, but I wasn't the one who constructed the building, so we did the plumbing. The solar project, everybody can see that it's being worked on right now. And saw the panels out here, I spoke with Mark, or not Mark Richardson, but New York Light Energy today. They're saying that within the next two to three weeks, the project should be completed, depending on the weather. So I'm quite excited about that. Joe and I are going to be going out probably maybe tomorrow or the next day to purchase a monitor for the, for the, just to be able here to show the real time savings and what the system is actually doing for the town hall. That's not going to be any cost to the, to the town, Joe and I. And I think Norm had said he would like to donate to it, so we're going to put in and purchase a monitor, am I correct?
Yep.
We had a problem when the smoke, they were checking out the fire alarm system here and the window went down. We had a center for security up here. I happened to be here yesterday, he showed me how to reset it, so we won't have to pay for that again, if I can remember how to do it. It seems like a very easy fix. I told George I'd be more than happy to show him how to do it, in case I'm not around if it ever goes off again. I gave, here's a fuel card from Pilot, so we can have an application. It's all we have to do is to purchase our gas without paying any tax, because municipalities don't pay any state or federal taxes. So it's all we need is a, is to get them our, our tax ID number and we can purchase fuel from them without, it's probably, I think it's 40 or 50 cents a gallon cheaper. Whatever it is and what the, whatever the taxes are, and it's quite substantial, especially in New York.
Yeah, no doubt.
Another thing is the, just a comment on the Pangburn Road Bridge, where I was speaking with Joe Ryan, Joe Ryan? It'll be four weeks this Friday, so. It'll be four weeks this Friday since anybody has done any work on that bridge. No one has been there. It'll be four weeks this Friday since anybody's done any work. There hasn't been anybody there this week. It's four weeks now since anybody's been working on it. I don't know what's going on with it, but the rate they're going, they'll never get it done by, by the time the snow flies.
Yeah.
So you might wanna mention that to him, what's going on with it. I'm sure he's not even aware of it, since he was on vacation. And I think that just for some consideration that the town board should be thinking about, with all the things that are going on with the state police barracks and the amount of money that we're gonna have to put into that building, there hasn't been much money placed into that building, probably within, since this building was built. And we can't make any money on a building. Next year, the building is gonna have to be painted, the outside of it. The driveway is in need of repair. The roof has to be replaced and some of the estimates I'm getting are out, just out of this world with this, this, you know, this...
Got a wage?
Yeah. I think that we should actually be looking at selling the building. We can't make any money on it. It's costing, it's gonna end up costing us money. And you could take the money, put it in the bank and you probably, it's not appreciating in value, that's for sure. It's depreciating in value with the rate it's going. And I think that we should be seriously looking at selling the building, putting the money in the bank, at least you'll make some money on it with interest. And that's just my, my thoughts and I think that the town board should seriously be considering that. And that's all I have.
Anything for Lou? So, okay, I didn't even do it myself, but... So we're figuring two more weeks on, on the solar?
Two of the three, they told me. They said that it's gonna go very quickly now that they have all, the holdup was the solar panels. They had a problem getting the ones, if I'm not mistaken, Joe, wasn't that the problem? They had a problem?
Well, they, a host of things. Not the least of which was the weather.
Yes. But they said it's gonna go very quickly now with the, now that the solar panels are being installed, so we should be up and running here. And we have to get the monitor as soon as possible so that they can get all the wiring for it.
Mm-hmm. Good deal. Thanks, Lou.
Thank you, Lou.
Mr. Joe?
All right, I'm gonna be brief. And for everybody who doesn't know about our, we call it E-code, electronic code, we have a company in Rochester called General Code, has submitted to us an organizational analysis of our laws, ordinances, and resolutions going back to nineteen sixty-nine. They've asked us to review this. They have some questions that need to be answered by July seventeenth. So I've been working on that. And Mike, I will present my condensation of what they sent to me, to you, and we can talk about that. But it's moving along. I talked with the, our editor, it's her title in Rochester, and she's been very, very helpful. And she said we're on track and, you know, we're in good shape. So that takes care of the E-code. The other thing, well, I spent a lot of time with this Rube Goldberg fire system that we have in this building. We've been getting these rogue alarms that are just happening. And so we said, oh geez, we gotta check it out. So Wolf Security was able to do it the quickest. They came in and they checked every transducer in every room in this building and did a certification that they were functioning. But in the process of doing that, we found out that one sensor in the assessor's office triggered the door to come down over the window to cut off the oxygen supply. And I mean, this is, this is like a Keystone Cops routine in this building. You know, and I'm, I'm seriously making a recommendation that for the two thousand fourteen budget, we think about revamping this and have a single point of contact. Lou called this guy up in Clifton Park for the door, because the guy from Wolf didn't know how to reset. You know, we could, we could push the door up, he saw a key that goes up there, but it's like... So it's very frustrating to have inherited a system like that, that nope, you can't go to anybody and get a straight answer. Nobody knows. And it's costing the town money to call this guy in, seventy-five bucks from Clifton Park. Hundred, hundred bucks. It's ridiculous. So it seems to me that when this town board hands it, hands the town over to the next town board, that that town board have a folder that has, okay, here's our fire alarm system, and this is what it does and what it's tied to, the rooms that are covered, the zones in the building, and here's the single point of contact that you need to get in touch with. So anyway, we're, I'll, I'll be working on that, but that was very frustrating to, you know, to have to deal with stuff like this. And as for the contract thing, I haven't gotten much of a chance on it, but we talked, you have down here about Integris. And I'm a big fan about simplifying our billing process by canceling that. I mean, I don't think we're saving that much money by having them. And especially now with New York Light Energy coming in to sell us the reduced electricity. I think it's a good opportunity to, to do that. And that's all I have.
Okay. If you can be brief, the gazebo?
Oh geez, sorry. Okay, we got three estimates. We got Dabs, Dennison Construction, and Nick Mora, Jr., to estimate digging out a thirteen by thirteen section, four inches deep, to put in number two crushed stone. And then put the, we'll put the gazebo in that and then redo the electrical box, wire it to the gazebo into the floodlight, the flagpole. We're basically, again, these, all the three contractors have been affected by the weather and so they, they, I told them, you know, as soon as you can do it, the better. And I told each of them that we have to worry about the shrubs and stuff that are planted around there, and the civic committee has done a very nice job maintaining. And it appears that we have a pretty straight forward job.
Is this gonna be replacing the lights around the gazebo too that were damaged?
Well, it can. I mean, but I...
They're still there, some of them, but they're broke.
The electrical part of the count, of the estimates were just to get the new box, you know, rewired to the new gazebo. Then whatever else there was, we'll get that fixed though. But I didn't, I didn't address that.
All right, again, we can talk to Nick. So I'd like to target, if this is good for the board, that we complete this by August ninth?
It's doable.
It should be doable. And one of the reasons I'd like to have it done is for Mary Sue's family night, which is August nineteenth. So I'd like to have the gazebo up, flag up and lights on it, so...
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Good call, Mike.
All right. Okay, any questions for Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Joe.
All right. Do you wanna make a comment? Duaneburg Summer Rec Program is in progress. I think we need to put it in, Tim verifies on the website. If not, I'll forge what date it was.
The summer rec stuff?
Yep. Good deal.
On the front page.
Mike, do we need a, on this proposal for Dabs, do we have to vote on this? Can I go ahead and tell him?
We got one more bid coming.
Oh, we do?
Yeah. All right, so supervisors, so I'll go pretty quick here. So the water bonds, we've signed them. We'll get the documents up on the website. We will also get it into the newsletter, which should be coming out for the summer, add a breakout of, you know, per district, overall savings, et cetera. So I know we've talked about it plenty of times. So again, I'll highlight it. I'll get the documentation up on the website. We'll get a letter to go out to all the residents in the water districts.
Mike, you sent one round of analysis, it's on the website, the water bonds. Did you have some updates?
Yeah, I'll put the final.
Okay.
The final documents up.
All right.
And then we'll put the analysis per resident and per district and I'll put it in the newsletter too and send a letter out with George maybe, well, sometime after, your water bill's already went out, so. Again, the savings, hopefully it should be fairly significant. You know, I think we estimated three hundred and eighteen thousand over, over the life of this, of the nine out of ten bonds. Haven't gotten to the planters, but I think we got a little time because we don't have the gazebo yet. Norman Skill, I think the, this Thursday, we're opening bids for the Norman Skill repairs. So as soon as the reward debt and the water drops, we should be good to go. So not much news there. And I already talked about Nick, or I'm sorry, Highway, so I think that's it for myself. All right, anything for me, guys?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eliminate these contracts, you're gonna cancel the energy.
Right.
I talked about the garbage. We can have the savings on that. If you wanna do that, we have an urgent meeting from the sheriff's department. I think we oughta go there and do that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'll make a note to write Mr. Agostino, Sheriff Agostino, the status is, I see that UCC signed for Rotterdam? So I think our sheriff's without home now.
So...
Yep, that's cool. You wanna say that?
I'll call them and tell them to...
Or if they sign up, Mike, from the OBR union?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, let's move on. Minutes approval, I didn't have them, so right now I'm gonna just put them in here. It's unavailable. We'll take a look at it for next month, so I'd like the tables, resolution for now. Town board meeting approval, do I have a motion, town board approve the video, audio, tape recorder on July ninth, two thousand thirteen, town board meeting upon viewing of town supervisor as delegate. So a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Joyce?
I need to make a note to get in touch with Time Warner about carrying our, our videos. I think we'll be okay for July. I think August is gonna be a challenge. You don't know by chance, do you, Ben?
I can look into it for you.
All right, I think, I think we run out of proctors?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Drop one off to them, set up, set up an account or whatever needs to be done.
Okay, yeah, if you do that, that'd be great.
All right.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, new business. Do I have a motion, the general fund's claim, do I have a motion, the town board approves the general fund claim one seventy-nine for the payment to the law firm of Romer, Wallens, Gold, and Minogue, I'll appeal for the services to date of Michael Quavis, counsel to defend the Prince Town, Town Board in a complaint filed by Michelle Van Wart, DHR case number one oh one, six zero, eight seven nine, for the amount of nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
You made the second?
Lou?
Lou.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes. General funds claims, do I have a motion, the town board approves general fund claims number one seventy-eight for the payment to the law firm of Romer, Wallens, Gold, and Minogue, for services to date of Michael Quavis, counsel to defend the Prince Town Town Board in a complaint filed by Carol McLean, DHR case number one oh one, six zero, five eight nine, for an amount of one thousand, six hundred, twelve dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Yes. General fund claims one seventy-six, do I have a motion, the town board approves general fund's claim number one seventy-six for the payment to the law firm of Romer, Wallens, Gold, and Minogue, for the services to date of Michael Quavis, counsel to defend the Town, Prince Town Town Board in a complaint filed by, actually that should be Rebecca Sealy, DHR case one oh one, six zero, eight five four, in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Joyce?
So general funds claim, I think we're still missing a, a claim in here, Carol? For, I wrote Ben Moore a check, I had my own checkbook to pay for the May state, or the May town board meeting.
I know it's in there.
Is it?
No.
I'm sorry?
I gave it to Ronnie and she said it was in there.
All right, I'll see it on change in the abstract. I don't see it.
That's the one where she needs supporting documentation, right?
Did I send her? Yes. It's not here. General funds claims, so we'll skip it. Do I have a motion, the town board approves general fund claims number one sixty-eight through claim two oh two, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-nine cents?
So... Looks like you just approved one seventy-six, one seventy-eight, one seventy-nine. You did those separately?
Yeah.
So is that total amount for the claims other than those three?
You're correct.
Maybe this has to be revised to be, you're approving claims...
Do we count that, Joe?
One sixty-eight, then one seventy-six, one seventy-seven, and then one eighty-two.
I think we're gonna have to fill all the abstracts in.
Mike?
This is just a little bit inconsistent.
I think we can figure it out.
Oh, you can figure it out, I'm just saying we're gonna have to do the abstract.
All right. So let me adjust this. Do I have a motion, the town board approves claims one sixty-eight? Do I have a motion, the town board approves claims one sixty-eight through claims two oh two with the exception of claims one seventy-six, one seventy-eight, and one seventy-nine in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-nine cents?
What is the total?
Twenty thousand eight nine five dot eight nine.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
General funds transfer, do I have a motion, the town board approves the following transfer from ZRC Supplies, line item eight zero six one, six four four for the amount of one hundred and nineteen dollars to ZRC Professional Services, eight zero three five one. Reasons under budgeted, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Yes. Highway claims. Do I have a motion, the town board claims, approve claims three and four in the amount of one thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents for road work for the month of April, two thousand thirteen?
So moved. What was that?
It was just general road work, maybe some salt, you know, for April.
I'll second.
So Bob, you were first?
Yes.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Yes, there's probably a description actually in here. And Duane'sburg in there too, for the year. Highway transfer. Do I have a motion, the town board approves the transfer of one thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-six cents from the general fund account nine nine zero one nine two, highway fund account five zero three one for road work for the month of April, two thousand thirteen? So I'll make.
I'll second.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yep.
Myers?
Yes.
Yes. Water fund claims. Do I have a motion, the town board claims, approve claims sixty-three through sixty-seven in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents?
So moved.
I'll second.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski? Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Joyce?
Just some information for the, again, for the public here. George took off, but looking at George, working with Joe, Lou's noticed it. The cost, there's no savings on carrying the Integris contracts with these sites, especially with three of them now are gonna go to solar. It looks like just in this month's bills, it's about four hundred and thirteen. It is some dollar between the general fund and the water fund in Integris bills. And this is again, summertime, the bills are low. So I don't think we're saving anything. It's probably costing us by the time we do paperwork and stuff, so.
Yep.
I just think it's time to cancel it. So again, we can save five hundred dollars a month or so. You know, we're not gonna save that much, you know, because National Grid's gonna pick up some of it, but again, with the feedback from the New York Light Energy and solar, we should be doing pretty good, so. Do I have a motion, the town board authorize supervisor Joyce to have the consultation with attorney Quavis to cancel the Integris energy contract under the notice provisions of that contract?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Joyce?
As we talked before, the, we're opening the bids up for the Norman Skell this week. Just for the audience, again, just a reminder, during Hurricane Irene, we had some damage done on the Norman Skell Creek in effort to protect the water main pipes that run down that side of Route Seven. FEMA came in and did an assessment, had granted us some money, and then the DEC and NCRS have also come in. So it's gonna be no cost to the town, but again, it's some paperwork, it's gotta go back and forth. And this particular resolution is to allow the county or the DEC, once the project is complete, to write the check they promised us for twenty-five percent of the program. So it has to be a contract between us and the county to authorize that payment. So this will take us to a hundred percent, once the project's complete, of rebuilding the Norman Skell. And speaking of that, I did get, before we go anywhere, I did get a call from a resident, I have his name here, but he thinks there's some concern up on Mural Peterson Drive, down in the valley down there, that we need to go down and take a look. So I gotta get in touch with NRCS, DEC, and the local soil team to see if we can go down there and clean out the, clean out the stream, so.
Well, that's down where those houses are, now, isn't it?
Yeah, that little bridge goes across, it's already getting jammed up. So I don't know who can go into the stream. But we wanna, so I just got a call and see, Pat Bishop mentioned somebody, and I was gonna ask Mike, and then I talked to Dan over to, and Gino, so I got some names. I'll keep you guys copied. But maybe we can get some, you know, clear up the stream down that part of the bank too, or that part of the stream, sorry. Okay. Do I have a motion, the town board authorize supervisor Joyce to enter an agreement with Schenectady County to accept the sum of fifty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars from the county's New York State Hurricane Irene Tropical Storm Lee flood mitigation grant from the New York State Empire State Development Corporation to be used for the, to be used for the local matching funds for the town's project agreement with the US Department of Agricultural Natural Resources Conservation Service, town of Prince Town wellhead protection, wellhead protection project?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Is that you?
Yes.
Esposito? Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes. And finally, follow-up resolution on the DHR complaints. So do I have a motion that, whereas complaints have been filed against the town with the New York State Division of Human Rights, New York State DHR, alleging discrimination in employment based upon the sex of the complaints by the town clerk, the town justice, the justice town clerk, and whereas the attorney for the town has been engaged to defend the town and its officers with respects to such complaints. Whereas the New York State Division of Human Rights scheduled a consolation conference with regards to the complaint of the town clerk, which resulted in an agreement order involving no payment of funds and a withdrawal of the complaint. And whereas the New York State Department of Human Rights has scheduled similar conferences with respects to the complaints filed by the town justice and the justice court clerk, is hereby resolved that the town board ratifies the actions of the town supervisor in settling the New York State DHR complaint of the town clerk, and is further resolved that the supervisor is hereby authorized in consultation with the attorney for the town to settle the New York State DHR complaints of the town justice and the justice court clerk under such terms as they deem advisable via that no town funds are committed to settle such funds.
I'll make the motion.
Do you guys have any questions before we go here?
Are we gonna see what the settlement's gonna be before we?
Well, the settlement without any claims, without any, no monetary. So as we did with the town clerk, you're gonna ask me and Mike to take the lead, and if there's gonna be a consolation, you know, a consolation or conciliation agreement, that as long as there's no additional funds, then no fault for the town. That's probably...
Right, and if it's a conciliation agreement, then it would have to contain the standard language that there's no admission of any wrongdoing on the part of the town.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay. Do I have a resolution, or a?
A motion.
A motion, sorry.
You got it.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
All right, and final piece of business, adopt the Uniform Notice of Claim Act. This was actually in the New York Monthly Association of Towns magazine, so. Do I have a motion that, whereas on December twelfth, two thousand twelve, Governor Cuomo signed into law chapter five hundred of the laws of two thousand twelve, the Uniform Notice of Claim Act, which took effect a hundred and eighty days thereafter on June tenth, two thousand thirteen? And whereas this new law amends the general municipal, general municipal law to permit notices of claims against municipalities and other public corporations to be served upon the New York's, New York Secretary of State with notice of claim, then forwarded to the named municipality. And whereas the new law further provides that no later than July tenth, two thousand thirteen, each municipality or other public corporation shall file a certificate with the Secretary of State, designating the Secretary of State as a municipality's agent for services of a notice of claim, and shall provide the Secretary of State with the name and address of the person to whom the Secretary of State shall transmit notices of claim. And whereas any municipality that does not file a certificate with the Secretary of State shall not receive his portion of the notice of claim filing fee, and failure of the municipality to file a certificate will not invalidate any notice of claim served upon the Secretary of State. And whereas it is in the town's interest to receive timely notice of claims filed against it in order to properly investigate same and to arrange for defense and indemnification of the same. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town board or the town of Prince Town hereby authorizes the town clerk to file a certificate with the New York State Secretary of State, honored before July tenth, designating the town clerk as the town's agent for receipt of notices of claim from the Secretary of State at the town's official mailing address.
So I'll make the motion.
No, wait, wait. If you already enacted this into law, why are we, why are we going at it? Because you just have to authorize the filing, basically, of the form to give them the contact information. Because otherwise, people can now file a notice of claim against the town with the Secretary of State. So you wanna receive that notice in a timely way, so you wanna give them the information. The other part of it is, there's a two hundred and fifty dollar filing fee if someone chooses to follow that process by filing with the Secretary of State in Albany instead of serving us directly. And if they do that, then we get a hundred and twenty-five dollars of the two hundred and fifty dollar filing fee.
Do I have a motion?
Do you have the form, it has to be sent?
It's on the website, Secretary of State.
Go ahead, you, Joe. What?
So Joe, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Second, Bob?
Esposito?
Yes.
Chuzinski?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That takes care of business for this evening. We'll open up the floor for public comment again. Same rules apply as at the beginning of the meeting. Please be conscious of your time and restrict your comments to town board business.
How do you know my name is James Porpego, I live at three thirty-nine Willow Run. My comments pertain to the highway aspects of the damages that were done. And what I'd like to bring to the board of attention is that the damage that was done to our properties up on Willow Run had nothing to do with Mother Nature. It was an attempt to save the blacktop from crumbling up on Willow Run to, I guess, extend the life of the blacktop that's up there. What happened was, they came up and they put crushed stone down the sides of our roads, and they never came back and compacted it. And I contacted Mr. Joyce, I believe it was in September, and he actually came out to my house, looked at the situation, assessed it, and said they were going to look into seeing what they could do. Mainly because the crushed stone was, in some spots, two and a half to three inches higher than the blacktop. So of course, what happened was, is the plows came through, coming through pretty fast, and they sprayed this crushed stone all over everybody's lawns. Now, I've destroyed two sets of lawn mower blades. I believe Michael has received emails from other people up there who have gotten flat tires. They are looking into the situation, we would like to have it resolved, but there's damage being done to people's property. If you've got, we also have people from adjoining neighborhoods who like to walk their dogs, come in with their kids, they come in with carriages, they jog because it's a not highly, you know, there's not a lot of traffic on that road where people can come in. So if one of us is out there mowing our lawns, and there's kids walking by, now you've got stones that are being thrown out of our mowers at kids and at cars that are going by. Now, they have come out and tried to figure out what they're gonna do with the situation, but we need to get the stone out of our lawns, and we need to get it off the edges of the roads. Because as I've stated to Michael in the past, in several emails that I've sent to him, I mean, everybody's taking turns going out there. Part of the problem is, you've got younger kids, they come through there, and they're running over the crushed stone and throwing it in the roads. You've got people that got nice cars up there, me personally, I have a couple of classic cars, and they have stainless steel down the sides of them, and I don't want them getting destroyed. So I understand that, you know, with the storms and everything, that there was things that were more important that needed to be fixed. Obviously, Kelly Station was, you know, a big mess, but I think this could have been avoided, you know? And the people that live up there would really like to have this straightened out because we can't maintain our properties down by the road. I mean, everybody's always taking care of their property. We've never waited for the town to come around once every six months and mow the lawns. We take care of it ourselves. And we would really appreciate it if they would come up and fix this problem. Thank you, appreciate you, John.
Are you on Willow Run, Jeff?
Yes.
Sheldon, where, Inspector Drove, just a question to ask either Mike or Lou about the state police barriers, about what exactly, I noticed that there's been a lot of necessity for a lot of repairs and thoughts that we should sell the property. Do you know if we owe any money on that property? Do you know how much they bring in on rent per month, or per year?
Thirty-eight thousand, I don't know the exact figure, it's probably thirty-eight.
Yeah, I think we should probably waive both of them, see maybe it's, because we do have a lease with the state police. Maybe when the lease is up, then explore that possibility. Just a comment, that's all.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm guessing thirty-eight, it's like thirty-seven, four or something like that.
On an annual basis.
On an annual basis, yeah. But we're committed to also spending closer to thirty-eight. The issue, I think what Lou's starting to get at is that repairs are gonna start outweighing the return, but.
Well, with the lease agreement, we gotta take care of the snowplowing, we gotta do the mowing, we've gotta do everything that's done over there. They do absolutely nothing.
Yeah, that's tough, of course.
Fixed fence, I mean, I've never seen a lease agreement that, where the leaser is not, you know, if they're leasing a building, doesn't, usually it's just, you repair the roof, everything.
in charge of maintaining the inside of the building and whatever's inside of it, and air conditioning or whatever, we're responsible for everything. Some, one or two of the air conditioning units are not working over there now, and they're gonna have to be repaired, though. I mean, the maintenance on this building is gonna be, I say, we haven't put a lot of money into this building in years, we should have been.
As far as that, can I make a comment about the Willow Run? Is there any suggestions on that, what's gonna be done?
So I talked to Joe very briefly today, you know, we're gonna go up and try, so I wanna make sure that again, that we're, you know, we're talking with the residents up there, but, you know, the first piece was go up there, get one of those rooms that are going tractor, push the stone into the road, and then pick it up off the road.
Pick up all of the stone?
Right, yeah. And then kinda go back through and backfill with topsoil and and seed. Another possibility is, is, you know, just to tar it, either with a nice, I'm not sure if there's different grades of tar, so I'm really kinda speaking out of school here, I don't know the answer, but that's an option. Or maybe in the real trouble spots, as Jim was saying, where the kids are cutting corners and spraying the rocks, you know, just clean those sections up. But again, you know, I hope to get up there next week with Joe and I'm sure probably Rick Kalinsky. And I'm really getting, you know, I'm not the highway guy, so I know one of the guys we met up there last year or last two weeks ago, wherever it was, he's works for Highway, I think he's an engineer, worked with Nick, and then again Joan and his team, and these guys are the experts, so I wanted to brainstorm a little bit, kinda figure it out, present it to the residents and say, you know, here's a couple options, you know, what's your thoughts?
They had also talked about putting stakes down to keep the kids from running over that. The problem is, we've also addressed the issue that the road isn't up to code, so now come winter time when they plow, if you try to put the stakes up so that they're not throwing the stones back on our lawns again, if the road's not to code, you can't get a plow truck, I mean, the person has to drive off the road and hit one of the stakes in order to avoid the plow truck, because the road's not wide enough.
Exactly, so it's kind of, I don't wanna say an interesting problem, but it's, you know, there are very specific items we need to consider. I mean, the whole thing when they accepted the development, if the roads weren't up to code, he should have just never accepted it, made it develop, bring it up to speed.
It's a real problem, I mean, we went up that one Sunday, I know exactly, your outrage is well placed, I don't, I, you know, we gotta do something about that, period, and.
I know we, yeah. All right, thanks, Jim. Additional comments? All right, we'll close public comment at 9:15. I'll open up to the councilman concerns, if we can be brief.
Can I go first?
Hey, Joe, go first.
I just wanna say that this public meeting, hearing, that we had tonight?
Public hearing.
Public hearing was really a wonderful exercise in democracy. It was people expressing, you don't have to agree with them or disagree with them, but they had the opportunity to stand up and voice their opinion, and on a document like the comprehensive plan, I think that is vital, you know, to to make it a good document. And so I tip my hat to you, Paul, and your papaya story cracks me up a second time, and Mary, thank you for your efforts as well. That's all.
All right.
And Lisa? Lisa was on the committee as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilman Myers?
I'm good. I think we've had a real good meeting, very productive.
Councilman Esposito?
I'm nothing to say, I think everything went well tonight. I'm happy that the solar project is on target to be completed, and I'm excited about it.
Me too.
So just hope it picks up and running.
All right.
And I'd like to thank Paul for his commitment, for their hard work that they put into the comprehensive plan.
And for myself, I just wanna touch base on one thing, so we, this this week, Denise Teetz, who is.
Oh, that's what I was gonna ask you. Forgot all about it, go ahead.
So she started this week, as you know, she's the, a person with a disability, she's doing the U.S. mail, she's accepting the mail, logging it, you know, from to with the date is, timestamping it, distributing it to the various departments and addresses, so she's doing pretty good, she's, you know, picking it up pretty good. So I mean, I see initial feedback, it's only been three or four days, so it's been very good. I'm gonna try to get to, we're expanding her work process a little bit more, so my ultimate thought here is that Denise will take the mail in, register, deliver it to the parties, the parties will, if they need to distribute it to copies, for example, to the town clerk or the town board, you know, you bring it back to her, say Denise, can you make copies and distribute, and she'll log it in her other logbook and say, hey, I've distributed a note from Mike Quavis to town clerk and board, for example. So it's, it seems to be working out pretty good, she's, they're doing some pretty good stuff, so good work for Denise and and the coaches. And with that.
You have my motion, to be sure.
See the leg go?
I'll second.
All right. So we'll call the.
Juzinski, Myers, and Joyce?
Yep, at 9:18.
Taking a roll?
Yes, I just did.
You did?